Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It is 5:37. Today is Monday, the 17th of February 2020. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order. We are in a special call meeting and we're meeting with our Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'll turn to Zach Sawyer, the Vice Chair of the P&amp;Z, for him to call them to order. Mr. Sawyer?
In the joint meeting with Planning and Zoning Commission will come to order.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Okay, we've got two items on our agenda. We have, first and foremost, we have a citizen comment period. Following the citizen comment period, we will hear a discussion and presentation from staff as well as from Kenda Keast Collaborative on the progress that's being made on the Unified Development Code and specifically Module One, which they'll talk more about that today. Prior to calling up Jessica McCackern, who will sort of officiate things and her role as Assistant City Manager, we have one citizen who's signed up to speak this evening. I would remind you that this is a, these are citizen comments, so they will follow our normal citizen comment rules. We don't, I don't think we are set up with our, we are, we're set up with our timer today, it's just in a different location. But you have three minutes to make your comments and we'll give you a warning when you have 30 seconds remaining. Okay, so Michael Chad Davis, Mr. Davis, please come forward. Mr. Davis is here representing Lucca this evening.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
My name is Michael Chad Davis. I go by Chad. I am a native Lubbock resident and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. In order to be mindful of time, I wrote my comments and I have copies of those for you, but I'd like to read those just to be concise. Thank you again for this opportunity to address Lubbock, the city of Lubbock's code of ordinances and zoning. The leadership that you have provided, starting with the comprehensive plan, has been outstanding. This is something that has been sorely needed in our community and this next step of the Unified Development Code is something that many of us are welcoming very warmly and excited about. I grew up in Lubbock. I'm the son of a Lubbock High Westerner and a Monterey Plainsman. I enjoyed the many different benefits of this generous community growing up here and I have tried to serve as a volunteer in different community groups to repay that generosity and provide opportunities to the youth and citizens of our community today. Currently, I'm honored to be serving on the Louise Hopkins Underwood Center for the Arts Board and am currently in the process of assisting the Board and the Center with potential plans to grow the successful campus downtown. A successful community campus that was located in what was once a dark and undesirable corner of downtown Lubbock. To say the least, development in downtown can be a daunting task, but it is not impossible. Specifically, Lucca owns two warehouse structures on the corner of Mac Davis Lane and Texas Avenue. The physical address of these structures is 1001 Mac Davis Lane. These two warehouses were originally zoned either light manufacturing or industrial as simple warehouses. As with many of the buildings on the Lucca campus, each may have started with this type of zoning, but now the whole campus falls into Central Business District Six or CB6. The multiple CB districts were approved by Council in 2012 and all current uses were grandfathered accordingly. I recently visited with the city of Lubbock to inquire about both the floodplain conditions and future zoning uses for the buildings as Lucca starts to anticipate the process and cost of bringing these buildings into compliance with current building codes as an assembly space. When discussing anticipated use of the warehouse as a joint art gallery, exhibition space, and rental space, the staff in the planning office told me that that type of use was not permitted in CB6 currently. Art galleries, museums, performing arts centers, and incidental retail centers are, but I was also told that pursuing a specific use at this time was not encouraged. Hearing this, I was naturally concerned. I looked through, what, is that 30 seconds? Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. I looked through all the other zoning districts to see what types of uses were available and I did not find a rental facility in any of those types of uses. Therefore, to be quick and to the point, we are looking forward to the potential of a mixed-use district. I was excited to see the handouts for tonight's plan. I'm here to speak on behalf of, in support of that, that will help our downtown with its redevelopment and certainly its revitalization.
Mr. Davis, please continue. If you have a few more, you're the only speaker we have. I think you're making a very good point, so please finish your comments.
Okay, I will just go ahead and just pick up and should be done here shortly. Like I said, I was naturally concerned. I read other zoning districts permitted uses, the permitted uses to see if anything like this was a permitted use. I honestly found nothing in C3, CB1, CB2, CB3, CB4, CB5, IHC, or IHO that permitted an art gallery as a mixed-use and rentable event space. I did find permitted uses in those other districts such as nonprofit training centers with incidental retail, art galleries, lodges, sorority, and fraternity houses, restaurants and studios, including art, teaching, dance, music, et cetera. One would certainly think that a Lucca-proposed mixed-use use could fit into that area and wouldn't be near the risk of a sorority or fraternity house necessarily. I was concerned that the CB districts in whole may not allow the flexibility of proposed mixed uses that are currently coming into the downtown and want and need a mixed-use designation. Therefore, I'm here tonight to respectfully ask for the consideration of UDC regulations that do allow for these types of uses in the CB6 area and others as well as part of our civic efforts to revitalize downtown. I believe that the nonprofit and for-profit investors shouldn't have to seek specific use designations and mixed uses should be standard. As for Lucca, the rental revenue on our facilities allows us to underwrite public events such as the First Friday Art Trail and are continually, and these types of events are continually improving the quality of life for all of our citizens in the region. I am also here to respectfully ask for one set of comprehensive guidelines for all downtown Lubbock. Any developer must currently meet zoning restrictions, the 1999 Design Standards for the Central Business District, and the guidelines, the 2018 Guidelines for Downtown Public Improvement Design Standards. Some of these documents even have conflicting information between the three, and if an investor seeks a variance, he or she must go before the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Urban Design and Historic Preservation Committee, or the Downtown Tax Increment Finance Board respectively, or together, to navigate any variances for nonconforming approval. I specifically have worked on the Buddy Holly Hall project. I'm the landscape architect of record and I had to present to all three boards for the different variances that it took to actually make the Buddy Hall happen and comply with zoning codes. Again, I want to thank this mayor and council for the fortitude that you have shown to open the comprehensive plan and zoning and development code for input and change. I sincerely thank you having grown up in this community. These items were left untouched and poorly amended for too long, leaving you with a significant task and risk to take, and I thank you for taking that. I appreciate your candor, your transparency, and your willingness to listen to requests like mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. You said you were going to share your comments with us? Thank you very much. Okay. That concludes citizens, citizen comments for this evening. I thought as I asked Ms. McCackern to come up, I would just remind everyone that, thank you for being here, by the way. We've got a nice, great turnout. I want to remind everyone that this is the logical next step, actually maybe the promised next step in this process. Our Plan Lubbock 24, our comprehensive plan, was approved by this council in December of 2018. There were a number of recommendations, but there were five priority recommendations made by that more than 30-member citizens committee. One of those was to update our zoning code, completely update it. And that is what this effort that we're going to discuss tonight is undertaking. So with no further ado, I'll ask Jessica McCackern, Assistant City Manager, to come forward and talk a bit more about what we're going to do tonight. Ms. McCackern?
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Planning and Zoning Commission members. We are excited for tonight. We are looking forward to hearing your input and a lot of, and our public input that we're going to get tomorrow. Mayor, oops, am I, how's that? I think you must have read my notes on exactly what to say because you've taken half my intro already, but I was going to remind you of why we're here today and where this stemmed. So as the mayor already said, we adopted our new comprehensive plan in December of 2018. One of the priorities of that plan was to then draft and adopt a new Unified Development Code, or what we commonly call a UDC. For those that are not familiar with the UDC, it is a document, a single document, that incorporates all development-related regulations into one easy-to-understand, easy-to-navigate document so that anybody can understand how to develop in Lubbock. As Mr. Davis just explained in one of his examples, it's very challenging right now in certain cases to figure out what document to look at and where to go from here. So this is going to be a huge improvement for our city and something that is very, very much needed. Our current zoning regulations that we operate under were actually drafted in the 1970s. So on top of being maybe a little bit challenging to navigate, there are probably also parts of it that are outdated. And so it's time to really look at what does our city need and where do we go from here? You may recall last year in 2019, we hired Kenda Keast Collaborative, a consulting firm, to write the UDC on our behalf and to walk us through the process of gathering public input and advising us on what makes sense and what should be incorporated into that UDC. It is going to be delivered to you in four different modules, the first of which is tonight. This is Module One, so this is a starting point and we'll see the revised Module One come back again along with all of our future modules as we dive into this very extensive process. Our goal is to have this complete and adopted in the spring of 2021. So we still have a little bit over a year to go in wrapping this up, just as a reminder. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Isom, our Planning Director, and Brian will introduce our consultants that are here tonight with Kenda Keast Collaborative. Following this presentation, if you have any questions, our staff, our consultant, we are all here to answer any questions that you may have. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Commission. So I'm going to keep it pretty short, as everybody has said everything I wanted to say. I'm just here to introduce our consultants, Kenda Keast Collaborative. This is their third site visit and they're going to be presenting Module One of four to you all tonight. So David Baird will lead things off and then Brian Mayberry will join in on the presentation.
Hey, the presentation up, should be loaded in, ready to be on the screen. Before it actually gets on the screen, I want to thank the citizen comment that you had, I think his name's Chad, who's here. Yeah, that was really, really some very excellent points that he made and I want to reiterate that in reviewing your zoning ordinance, we have come to a lot of the same conclusions that he's come to. So it's, it's actually quite rare that I have a citizen comment that leads me into this process as to, because some of the points you made were very, very, very good, I thought. So I just wanted to mention that now that we have the screen back up. So we kind of talked about, this is our third site visit. We have many more yet to come. We kind of like to use this funnel analogy that we state that, you know, at the front of the process, we're looking at a lot of different options and as we go through, we're kind of funneling it down. So this first module, as Jessica mentioned, there are four modules. So a lot of times we get, as part of this, there are people in the community that have a very strong opinion about one issue and we're dealing with a lot of issues in this code. So the most frequent comment that we receive back is, well, why didn't you talk about X, Y, or Z? Why didn't you talk about this issue? And my response has to be, well, it's not that we haven't discussed it yet, or it's not that we won't discuss it, it's just not part of Module One. So that's an important thing to know is that, and I speak that on the first, when the first module is delivered, we see that a lot. So I just want to kind of throw that out there. And as we go through this process, we'll be refining it. A lot of times, what we start with on the first draft is very similar to what we end up with. And there are other times in other communities where what we start with gets reviewed and moved and what we end up with can be, can be a little bit different. So there's a lot, you know, this isn't set in stone. I think that's important for people in the community to understand is that this is, this is a process. So we can, oh, I have the clicker, okay. Does it work? Is it not? Okay, there it is. Yeah, I don't think it was. Yeah, there we go. All right, we're straightened out. So just to remind everybody about some of the primary goals in this, implementation of the comprehensive plan. You know, having done that comprehensive plan, you're looking at the available options. Now, I have a slide that's going to come up that really kind of gets to this, is that the comprehensive plan really is kind of like looking at a menu and thinking through, what are all the possibilities for your city? What do we want to be when we grow up, so to speak? What's our vision of our community? Where do we want to go, kind of a plan? Now, really with the codes, it's really like actually, you know, cooking. It's actually about the ingredients. It's about getting down in fine detail. So this is a much more detail-oriented process than the comprehensive plan that you went through. So that's kind of important to know is that we're really getting into the language, really getting into what is that regulation going to be. So the cities that do a comprehensive plan first are in a much better advantage going, moving into a UDC. So that's, that's, that's good that we, that we've had that first. So just to mention what a UDC is, as Ms. McCackern said, it's taking all of your different land use, all of your development regulations, and putting them together. Really, one of the biggest things that we find, and we've seen it in your ordinances, is that there are things that are in conflict between one and the other, and that happens very frequently when you have two different codes because someone can look at the zoning ordinance and say, okay, we need to amend this section over here, but they don't realize it's tied with something in the subdivision regulations. And it may have been, it may have made sense at the time, but then 10 years later, you look at it and you realize, oh, gosh, these are, there's some serious conflicts here. So we're noticing that. That's one of the biggest reasons, also user friendliness. We also want to mention what a unified development-
Mr. Baird, interrupt for a minute. Can you guys hear, everybody hear okay at the back? We okay?
Okay.
Okay, we made an adjustment. I just want to make sure we got good sound. Bob, you're good back there? Okay, please continue.
Yeah, sure. So we also want to mention what a UDC is not, because sometimes people kind of think that it's too encompassing. What it's not, it's not property tax policy. It's not determining how your city or is, how your property is going to be assessed. It's not talking about what's going to be annexed into the city. It's not talking about capital improvements, not talking about construction standards, and also building codes, the actual structural codes it does not include. So we made the term Module One. This is a slide that talks specifically what Module One is. At the front, we call it the general provisions. That's really just your legal authority, your applicability, jurisdiction, which basically means that things, what things apply in the city limits and what things apply to the ETJ. We've got a slide that'll talk a little bit more about that issue. But then the heart of this module is in the second article, the zoning districts and the land uses. One of the things that we noticed going through right very early on in this project is just the number of different land use designations you have and the number of different zoning districts that you have. I like to say that if you think of that as like an X, Y axis, we're proposing to condense these. It's, the number of both districts and uses are so large that, I mean, I can give some examples here tonight, but at the open house tomorrow, we're going to have some large boards that will show in detail exactly how we've gone through that process. I'll say that it's actually for the land, for the zoning, for the land uses, it takes five different boards and for the zoning districts, it takes four. So it's, it is an all-encompassing way to kind of take a look at that. So I, for anyone who's really, really want to get into the details of that, I would highly recommend that you, you come to that tomorrow night because it really lays, lays that process So as we spoke, we have four modules. One of the things that's a little bit different from our typical process is, is that with the variety and the need for mixed-use districts in the city of Lubbock, this, this module being the land uses and zoning districts, we've brought out and added an additional module that we're calling Module Two, and that'll be on our next site visit. And that reflects and discusses the mixed-use districts in the downtown area, so we can really specifically take a look at that because it is, it really is a need in this project and it's something that I think will greatly, greatly benefit the city of Lubbock. So the general provisions, I've kind of talked about what that is, so I'll just move on. This is a map that just shows your city limits and your ETJ. So you can see how the ETJ for the city of Lubbock, it's that, the lighter shade of blue there. It's pretty extensive and it's important to mention that because there are a lot of things by state law that cities, there's some things cities can do in their ETJ and there's some things by law that they can't do.
Mr. Baird, one moment. Mr. Chadis?
Could I stop for just a minute, please?
Yeah, sure.
For the audience, ETJ, could you please-
Yeah, sure, I'm sorry. It's referred to as extraterritorial jurisdiction. So that basically means areas that are outside of the city limits but are close to the city limits. And there, by state law, there are certain things that a city can do to regulate those areas because the idea is that eventually it probably will become part of the city limits. But there's some things by state law that you can't. So when I talk about the applicability section of an area, that's important because at the very front, it will state out, these are the items that apply with, within the ETJ or within the extraterritorial jurisdiction, and here are the things that just apply within the city limits. So, and by the way, if anyone has any other questions, comments, please, you know, jump in. We're happy to provide more information as we go through. So a couple of things that also get fleshed out in this Module One in the first part is what we call vested rights. Those are things that, you know, if a developer started a project and accrue certain rights and transitional provisions, these are important to have in there for the applications that are currently in the process. Because once, you know, basically, the reason you have this is to ensure that when this is adopted, if someone has started their development process, you don't want to then just change the rules on them immediately. So it allows for them to get their project completed and then new projects that start in the pipeline are the ones that this UDC applies to. So also within, well, actually, this moves into the second article. We discuss the meaning of the official zoning map. I should mention that as we're doing this consolidation process with the zoning districts, we'll be working with your GIS group to, and I think actually next, I'd like to do this the next time we're here at the end of Module Two, and to show, here's what your zoning districts look like today and here's what they will look like, you know, if, with the proposed changes. With this, we have a lot of concern about nonconformities. I know nonconformities is an issue that has been brought up with, within the council for us to look at. That issue is going to be something that we, we are going to thoroughly research, thoroughly look at, but it will be part of Module Four. So it's something that is kind of at the end of the process, not the beginning. But what I do want to say is that there's a lot of fear when we consolidate land uses that there's going to be a lot of nonconformities. It's actually the opposite, and that's what you're going to find, is that there are a lot of things that you're going to think, well, why is this not permitted? Why isn't, why do we, are we not permitting an art gallery in, for example, the gentleman who talked to you, in the main core of downtown? Why is that not a permitted use? As we go through this and consolidate, that's what we're analyzing, that's what we see. And by doing that, it provides property owners with more options that they can do with their property, and that's one of the biggest benefits of going through the process in this manner. So this is a list of what we're proposing as your, your new zoning districts. And as I mentioned, this would be the new districts. Now, each one of these, we have a table that, it may actually be, yep, it's the next slide. It's pretty small here. This is the actual table from the actual proposed code and it lists on the far right, you can see what the former zoning districts are. Sorry, we couldn't zoom in large enough, but for those of you who have the paperwork, you can take a look at that. You can see how that, how we're, that consolidation process kind of works. So use categories, this is what we, we separate things out in this land use matrix. And you can see that these are the lists here, and we separate it even more into what we call residential and non-residential. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Mayberry. He's going to talk about basically why we're proposing districts the way we are, just to kind of lead him all, lead, before he comes up. Basically, the way we look at districts is on by character. If something has a different character, then it needs to be a different zoning district. If the character is the same, then there's no reason to not, in our view, not to consolidate those because there's really no benefit to having two different. And what we find is that those ones that have the same character are the ones that are going to be the large amount of your rezoning cases. So that's one of the things that by consolidating, we, and we know, will bring down is the number of rezoning cases that you see. So with that, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
Thanks, David.
Counsel, Mr. Mayberry, before you start, council, commission, any questions before we take this next, next step?
And if you have any councils, you know, questions to me after Brian, then I'm happy to go back. I'm, I'm still right here.
All right, please continue, Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Joy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You do have, in Module One, you have some definitions and stuff.
That's correct. So although the definitions are at the very back, the reason we do that is to show how, because when we consolidate the land uses, it's important to show how we've done the definitions of those. So the, your large number of land uses before, if something's been consolidated under one term, we've listed all of those previous land use definitions actually in the definition itself. So that's going to really help with, and reduce the complexity of changing over to new code because if you knew that something was, like for, one of the largest categories you had was light manufacturing, a specific type of light manufacturing. I'm not sure if that's, you know, if you're a staff person saying, well, I'm not sure if that's light or heavy, but I know in the old one, it was the specific term. Well, now they can flip back to the definitions and they can see that exact term and say, oh, okay, well, that is definitely light manufacturing. So that's one of the reasons we put the definitions up front. We think it's a very important for you guys to have that in the first module. We typically don't do it that way, but because of just the number of land uses that were in your code, we wanted to define that, so.
Well, I noticed earlier in the presentation, in terms of zone changes, there's a provision that the city manager would have final say on part of that. Did you, do you remember seeing that?
Well, there is a process for the interpretation of what the land use is, and I think that's what you're referring to. Rezonings themselves would still be done the same way that you, you have procedurally today. It's just, we put a clause in there, or we recommend to put a clause that says, if, if this is a new land use or it's something that wasn't contemplated, this is how we go about trying to interpret which category this falls into. And so that's a process that at first would be the administrator, which in this case would be your, your, your planning director, would have the ability to take a look at that. And then if he decides that doesn't have a clear understanding of what that is, then it can go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I think that's what, what you're-
There was another step in there that included the city manager.
Yeah.
Between planning and ZBA. That's what I'm trying to, I understand we're trying to simplify. A lot of these uses have a list as long as your arm and you're trying to narrow that down, understand that. So I'm just, that was my question.
Yeah. Now, the process that we go through about that, we've actually had some discussions with staff, actually right before this meeting, about how we want to structure that. We do have a way that's recommended in the first draft, but that would be something that we really want to have comments on because I can see that being something that, it may be what it is today in the first draft, but- it may be what it is today in the first draft, but it probably, and most likely, could change as we go through and talk more about how that needs to be handled.
Okay. And the other thing is, you mentioned the meeting tomorrow evening?
Yes.
Tell everybody where and what time.
Yeah, sure. Well, we've got a variety of different meetings. I know the open house here is, the start time is, it's, the open house here, the start time is at five o'clock. That will be the one that has the large display boards that really goes into the nuts and bolts about how we consolidate these land uses. And also, we'll go into more details about how we've, how we look at each proposed zoning district. Some of the, the slides that Brian's going to, going to discuss, get, get to what, what we'll be presenting there. So, so five o'clock here at the City Council will be that, that open house, here, here at City Hall, excuse me.
Can you tell us briefly what will be happening at 6:30 tomorrow?
Yeah, sure. There's going to be a.
Seven thirty.
Seven, seven thirty? Well, we're with, two of the council members, we're going to be meeting with North and East Lubbock citizens, and I'm, I have to ask what the facility is.
Mayhoun Library.
Mayhoun, Mayhoun Library. And so that's one, one of the goals that we set for this project was to get out into the community and not have all the meetings right here at City Hall. I think that's really important. We're, also during the day, we're going to have a meeting in, in West Lubbock with, with some stakeholders as well. So, yeah, that, that, that will also be to tomorrow night, and that's, again, to gauge and get input from the citizens of North and East Lubbock.
Thank you.
Sure.
So if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
For, for the ones that couldn't make the meeting today?
Mm-hmm.
There's still two other opportunities for them to come in and, and have their input.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, yes, two meetings tonight, different times, different places, one at City Hall, one in Northeast Lubbock, but yes, those will, those will be, this is more of a presentation style. We will have a short presentation at both of the meetings tomorrow night, but it will be an opportunity really to engage with us as consultants, engage with the city, for the city council members who are here, are there, and also city staff. So I highly recommend that if, if people that weren't able to be here tonight, or, you know, want to engage with us, talk more about their relationship to this process, you know, that would be a great opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. David, I really enjoyed the definitions. They were relatively dry, but I did find an interesting definition of dancing. On page ninety-one, it says, "Dancing means to move the body, especially the feet, in rhythm ordinarily to music." I just thought that was interesting. Some of us have a hard time doing that in rhythm, so I guess we're not really dancing. But you never know what you might find if you read the definitions, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. We'll continue. Mr. Mayberry?
You don't talk to anybody else?
No, I'm not, no.
And Ms. Joy, that question you had a moment ago about the city manager and a specific thing, that fell, I, I had the benefit of, of looking around while David was talking with some help from staff. That had to do with the vested rights determination, where someone is, has built a project and it's not, or had, they've had approval on a project, but it hasn't been built yet, and so they would probably often, or maybe not, they, depending on the part of the code we're looking at, might want to be locked into your old regulations as far as things they would do on that property versus the new and adopted regulations when that time comes.
Yeah, my original thought was, does the city manager really want to do that? I mean, you know, that's just one more thing to.
Yep.
Cause problems.
This draft might change to where that piece goes away as far as the city manager's role, but it's what we have right now.
Okay, thank you.
Before I start, again, good evening. David mentioned character a couple of times. Just to elaborate on that and our perspective on community character, that's sort of the concept, you know, a, a restaurant out on the highway, on the interstate, is a lot different from a restaurant downtown. That's the same land use of a restaurant, but the character is way different. The, the look and feel and, and environment is way different. An office park or an industrial park is offices, but an office downtown or somewhere integrated into a neighborhood is a lot different from each other, even though the uses are the same. And so we come at projects with that in mind, and how the use of a property often isn't as important as the amount of paving or parking, and where that parking is located, how much buffering separates it from a neighboring use that there could be a potential conflict with in terms of intensity, or the, where the building is on the property, whether it's way back with parking in front, or pushed up to the street with parking to the side or to the back. So those kind of things are what we look at when we talk about community character. And that was a part of our sort of DNA analysis of Lubbock when we did the critique and evaluation of your regulations a few, a few months back. And so when we're presenting, I'm going to take you on a kind of whirlwind tour of your proposed zoning districts, and that really informed a lot of these districts and our choices that we've put in this draft related to those. So the first district, and these are going to be mostly residential first, and then non-residential after that. There's a gap in the middle of the mixed-use districts, which Dover Coal, our subconsultants, are working on, and those, again, are oriented to the downtown. These are sort of everything outside of the downtown. And just to remind everyone who, who might not be planning nerds like David and I, our zoning districts are parts of the city on a zoning map that have specific rules related to each of them. So you might have, you know, a certain kind of residential district mapped on, on the zoning map, and a uniform set of standards and regulations are going to apply to that area that might not apply to something like a more multifamily-oriented zoning district, or a business-oriented zoning district, or an industrial zoning district. So that's what we mean when we're talking about zoning districts. Residential estate, again, is the, the first one. It is the least dense. In other words, it has the biggest amount of, of property per house, the lowest number of, of people per acre, if you want to think of it that way. Again, the lowest density, there's a lot of open area, often on the property itself as opposed to common open area that would be more like a park or nature, natural preserved area that, that wouldn't be able to be developed in the future. These are, again, large lots, mostly residential, with agricultural uses as well allowed. Typical, although you're, you know, this is within the city limits, so you're not probably going to have a, a ton of agricultural activity, but there are allowances in there for that type of activity.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Pat.
So this is residential estate versus rural?
Residential estate, I believe that is the term we landed on in the code. That often are, it's often kind of a synonymous term, rural estate, residential estate, estate being the key word.
Yeah, because I think we refer to it as rural residential today, correct?
Correct. In the comparative table, it calls out it is our rural residential. It's used in the document, though, interchangeably.
Okay.
We've got it rural or residential, but the state's the operative.
We'll consistify that, as I like to say. Suburban residential is the next district, and that's probably kind of intuitive, one step more dense than what we would have had in the rural estate or residential estate. Mostly single, again, single-family detached housing, just like the estate district. By single-family detached, I just mean your typical house that's not a duplex, or not, you know, attached to another unit, or not an apartment, just the typical all-American single-family detached dwelling. These have moderate to small, moderate to larger-sized lots. So again, the, the density is just a little more dense, or a little more people per acre than what you would have had in, in the estate. And there, there can be, there is open space that is a part of this, whether it's a part of the, the lot itself under private control, or again, more publicly oriented in the form of a park or preserve, or something of, of that nature we do. And in other modules, there'll be provisions, we would project, related to trails and access to those park areas, so that, so that you would have usable and accessible areas of that nature. Right now, in this module, you're only going to see, as David mentioned earlier, this is, this module is the, lays out the districts and the land uses that are allowed, the building setbacks or building placements, maximum height of buildings, stuff like that, not stuff, really not provisions related to street widths, or specific things about landscaping, or signs, or any of those other things that go into the, into the cookbook, as we showed earlier. Oops, sorry. Semi-urban is one more step denser than suburban residential. These have smaller lots, again, there are, these are definitely for a setting that would have public utilities. The estate would be, could be potentially more private, like septic systems, if you, if you have those for Lubbock and wells and things of that nature. We have allowances for clustering in this district and in the suburban district, but allowances for clustering houses together, so, which we'll get into in a moment, so that although the houses are on smaller lots and closer together, there is overall preservation of green space and open area permanently that is common open area. This is, again, one step denser than the suburban residential. A variation on the previous district, semi-urban residential, is semi-urban residential attached. These are geared only for duplexes and single-family attached units, and the difference between those is, a duplex is two dwelling units for two different families on one single lot, while single-family attached are a dwelling unit for a family and another dwelling unit for a family, and they're on two different properties with a lot line down the middle, and often under separate ownership, often fee simple ownership by those people who live there, while as a duplex is more often than not rented out. So different varieties of housing types are an important part of this module. We try to, and as we'll see in more detail in a moment, have as many options as we can that a developer can pick and choose the kinds of housing types that they would like to have in their development, under, under certain parameters, with buffering and some other controls like that, so that there aren't, wouldn't be ideally so many rezonings needed to be requested to build the right kind of mix of different housing types.
So are you referencing garden homes when you're talking about the zero lot lines?
Right. There's different terms for different types of houses, but garden homes is often used to refer to houses that are set over to one side, along one lot line, and so that on the other side, there's more usable side space instead of being in the middle of the lot with a little bit on each side. It's over to one side and more, has more, again, more usable space. Sometimes people call those single-family attached dwellings, maybe they call them garden homes, or they call them twin homes, or there's different terms, but we try to stay consistent in this draft with a consistent set of terminology, so that everybody's talking the same language.
Okay, thanks.
But the single, or the semi-urban residential attached, much smaller lots, there's allowances for two different kinds of duplexes, side-by-side or one on top of the other. Often, the ones on, the one on top of the other design is a little less conspicuous as a duplex. You can see, it's probably a familiar sight there on the, the screen, that's, that two-story building. I know the one in the middle is a duplex, just by looking at the, the doors, but often someone could drive by there and just assume it's a regular two-story house. And so there's provisions built in that even actually in the single, or the semi-urban residential attached district have some incentives to do that style of duplex as opposed to the side-by-side form. You can do both, it's just you get a little bit more units per acre on the top and bottom than on the side-by-side. Urban residential is the most dense residential district. It would be geared more towards lower to mid-rise apartments. There, we have some, a little bit, this is not truly a mixed-use district, but there are some allowances to have under certain controls, some non-residential uses take place in it, often limited, which means they don't require a special use permit, but they do have to live up to certain standards that are written out in the document. There are open space requirements for different types of development in this district, and that would be more, I kept mentioning kind of open areas preserved or parks, this would be more kind of plazas and squares. We know that your area around the university is kind of very oriented architecturally and design-wise for that kind of, of look, and so that is built into this district as Well, I said we were, that was the last residential district, but we kind of have one more, and that's the established neighborhood district. So when, often when we adopt, and when a city adopts a new unified development code, the concern from many people, especially homeowners, is that they're going to suddenly not be able to expand, they're going to have a non-conforming structure, that, that means that structure was built according to the rules that were in effect when it was built, but now maybe some kind of setback or something has changed to where their building is no longer conforming, so it's a non-conforming building, and therefore they have to, and their eyes jump through a good number of hoops in order to do an improvement on their property, like add on to the back or to the side. We have established neighborhood regulations that would apply to stable, built-out residential areas that would have sort of basically easier, make it easier to do additions to houses that would not require a variance under many circumstances, and could instead be approved administratively under, as I keep saying, under some criteria and standards. Don't, I don't think we, we give away the, the barn or the farm or whatever on this. I think that there are reasonable standards in there that would allow modest expansions to houses that otherwise, if we didn't have this established neighborhood district, wouldn't be able to do that. And that's often good for the whole neighborhood, because it encourages reinvestment. I've mentioned a few times, open space and clustering, just wanted to go through a little bit of what those differences are. We have four different types of developments in the draft, conventional, cluster, planned, and mixed-use. Conventional, you probably already know it, even if you don't know, you know it, just the typical, single-family subdivision where there's, any, any green space is enclosed within their fences, or, you know, on the, in the front yard, privately owned. That's, you could do it today in Lubbock, you could do it yesterday in Lubbock, and you'll be able to do it tomorrow under the new code in Lubbock, with the same outcome. Typical, single-family, conventional development. We also have built in, as I said, clustering, where if you will dedicate a certain, and I say you, if a developer will dedicate a certain spelled-out percentage, depending on the district, spelled-out percentage of common open space, that's open space that can't be developed in the future, set aside, and often either a homeowners' association maintains it, and in some cases, although it's not the trend lately, the, a city, the city could potentially take it on. But that's not something that most cities are doing nowadays. Often, it's homeowners' association controlled. But anyway, you would be able to have smaller lot sizes that are a little closer together, and that would make room overall for more open space. And we've built in incentives to do that, which we have a little scenario in a few slides that shows some of the, basically the density incentive that would go along with doing clustering as opposed to conventional, because clustering is different, it's not the norm, and so that, a typical developer is going to think, okay, I'm giving away this land for open space, I could have built houses on there, so I'm making less money off of this project. Well, we want to be sensitive to that, and to allow that person, that developer to recoup some lots, and even more lots than he could have normally done, by, in, in trade for setting aside that open area. So just a sample calculation, if you had forty acres of property proposed for development, and there's a twenty percent requirement to set it, set twenty percent of the property aside as permanent open space. So that's, of forty acres, twenty percent is eight acres. So you're taking, try to walk through all the math as best I can, I'm not a math person, forty acres on a property, taking out eight acres, which is the twenty percent, so you're left with thirty-two acres to build on. acres, which is the 20%, so you're left with 32 acres to build on. There's a density in, I think that's suburb, yeah, suburban residential, of 2.25 units per acre. So you still get to count that 40 acres you started with, even though you really only have 32 to build on, and you end up getting 90 units that you can build, and I say units, again, that's basically houses, on that 32 acres that's left over. If you had done the same type of development as a conventional subdivision where there was no open space set aside, you would get about 76 units or so, give or take, and the 90 is give or take, but we're talking roughly, which is 18 to 20% bonus in the number of houses that this developer can do in exchange for setting aside a permanent area of open space. The way you would have to do it now, and in most places, is to do a planned unit development that takes more time than normal, than what you would get to do by right, takes negotiation, the developer isn't quite sure what, how it's going to end up, or if it's going to even be approved by the planning zone and zoning commission and then the city council. There's uncertainty for the neighbors, they don't know really how it's going to turn out because it's negotiated up until it's approved by the, or denied by the council. So this builds in standards and, in black and white, so that the developer can know what to expect and, you know, the surrounding property owners can too. There are two more subdivision types that I mentioned, planned, just think of planned as sort of cluster on steroids, where there's even more open space set aside and therefore an even more of a bonus in the number of units that can be had. And the planned is not allowed out in the more rural or suburban districts, it's allowed in the semi-urban, semi-urban attached and urban residential, the more urban districts. This is more like, maybe more like vintage township, where there, they don't quite have a mixing of housing types, but our version of the planned option has more housing types than what the developer could normally do, and the increased density that went along with the clustering. Finally, mixed-use, and that's going to be more part of the mixed-use districts, but it's, there's kind of two types of mixing of uses. There's horizontal, where I think of, here you have apartments, you know, a set of apartments, over here you have offices, and over here retail, that's horizontal mixed-use. Vertical would be retail, all in one building, retail on one floor, offices above that, or residential and offices a mix above that, so that the real active stuff where people are coming and going and, and sitting out and having a coffee or whatever is on the, taking place on the first floor, and then people can live up above that activity on the, on the upper floors. Now I'm getting into the non-residential districts. Again, these are based on, really, when we did, when we did the research on what we thought made Lubbock unique and what its DNA really is all about. This is neighborhood commercial, small-scale, commercial uses that don't attract a lot of traffic or attention, they can be placed with residential uses nearby and with some modest buffering, wouldn't cause usually much of a problem. These would be, tend to be located away from big intersections, would be more at the collector level and local-level streets, as opposed to highways and bigger streets like that. We have an office district, which is just as it sounds like for professional office centers. They kind of serve as a buffer between, a buffer zoning district between residential zoning and more retail-oriented zoning. We will off, probably get in, at a later module into some standards that would make these appear more residential with maybe pitched roofs and more of a yard in the front with parking in the back. We can't do, there's some things that the state has, you know, won't let us do as far as building materials and things like that, but we can do some, some, some tricks with how the building is designed overall to make it more compatible with residential that could be nearby. Auto-urban commercial is the typical shopping center, a lot of parking in the front with the retail-style uses in the back, that is, you know, has been done and will continue to be able to be done in Lubbock. We would typically want these more farther away from residential uses because of their impacts and intensity, especially with the high levels of parking, and these are located, would tend to be located at major intersections. Each of the zoning districts, I should say, has a purpose statement that gives some guidance when someone is requesting a change in zoning. That purpose statement will spell out kind of the, the purpose of the district and appropriate adjacent districts, so something like this, probably if they, someone requested this right next to a suburban residential district, you know, that would cause probably some extra thought about, you know, if that was the right thing to do. So these all have purpose statements that kind of give in, in one little paragraph, kind of the gist of what that district tries to accomplish. Heavy commercial is sort of your, not quite industrial, but a lot of outdoor storage potentially, with kind of vehicle repair going on and things of that nature. So you would definitely want to probably have that located farther away from residential zoning districts and uses. We finally get into the light industrial, or to the industrial districts. There are currently three industrial districts proposed. You know, Ken DeKeast is a fan of reducing the amount of zoning districts as much as possible of these three. David and I have just casually batted around maybe having two instead, so again, this is a fluid document, you'll know about it if it does change, but we've thought of potentially light industrial, and then the next one you see, I think it's the plan, industrial park, potentially looking at combining, combining those, because they do have some similarities. But basically, the light industrial is sort of industry that's not too, not dirty, but does involve warehousing and distribution and maybe some heavier truck traffic, while the industrial park is more green in terms of the landscaping and the tree plantings and things of that nature, you know, often slightly nicer than just the light and industrial. So we might look at ways to combine those two and make both of them work. Finally, heavy industrial, that is the heaviest of the heavy industrial uses. You know, one piece that we've been mindful of are setbacks for all of these districts, but for the industrial especially, for that light industrial district, slide previous, if, if any building or if this district does hap, happen next to a residential zoning district, there is a 100-foot proposed setback from that industrial building to the edge of the residential property. So that's for light industrial, and for heavy industrial, right now, there's a 150-foot setback from that heavy industrial building to a residential property line. So, you know, that's a number, it can go up or go down depending on the feedback we get from the community, but that's part of why we're here, you know, for this trip and for others, is to get the feedback.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Can we go back to light industrial and industrial park? You kind of lost me there at the end. Speaking in reference to wanting potentially combining these to allow for, and I lost that last thought that you made.
Okay, just, they're, they're rather similar, sort of, in the uses that are allowed in them right now, industrial park and light industrial. And so often we come from, we come into a project wanting to have as, kind of as few districts as we can get by with, that allows more flexibility, but we also, you know, like to have some certainty built in with buffering and setbacks and things like that. But those two districts, the light industrial and industrial park, just have similar sets of uses in them, I think, right now, and so that would be the thought of potentially combining them, just to make for a more usable document, if nothing else. And David, sounds like David.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit more. I'd like to have some discussions with some of the industrial park people that you have before we make a recommendation to combine those two. The industrial park is, is, those are on much larger size plots of land. And then the light industrial, the districts that you have today incorporate some of the office uses a little bit better than the industrial park does. So while we do want to consolidate districts, we also want to make sure that we're not consolidating two that don't make sense. So those are some that I guess we need to learn a little bit more before we can really make a recommendation to consolidate them, but we want to let you know that's a possibility. So we're, we're, we're thinking through that, you know. You can consolidate too much if, if two districts are not of the same character and, and, you know, when, that can cause a problem. So that's one where, you know, we, we'd like some citizen feedback, we'd like to talk to some people who are involved in industrial here, so any thoughts that you have on that? We, you know, that would be something that would be very helpful to us, so, thank you.
Okay, that was the last, the heavy industrial was the last of the districts. Moving on and getting kind of to the light at the end of the tunnel, I think, there are land use standards in here in the unified development code, and there are really two types. Well, first of all, there's, there's guidance for unlisted uses, that's the, often the bane of, of a public planner, staff planner's existence, is these uses that were never anticipated in the code, like a dog, not quite, you know, one of these dog washing facilities, or ones that aren't quite a kennel but aren't just a pets, you know, aren't a pet store, they're like somewhere in between, or there's stuff like, you know, axe-throwing lounges now, or micro-manufacturing is another where somebody has a little space that they make stuff in, that if you were going to be a stickler, you would say was industrial or manufacturing, but it's taking place in a little space with just, you know, handmade output, so what do you do with that kind of thing? So we have guidance in the UDC draft for when those things come up, different criteria to look at for the staff and ultimately the director to make a decision on, on where that list, or that proposed use that someone wants to do fits in, and where it should be permitted. Of course, like any staff decision, that's appealable, and we're going to figure out what the appropriate appeal body is. Often it would be probably if it's a staff interpretation, often the board of adjustment or, but we'll, we would work with staff to figure that out. Mr. Mayor, did you have something? Oh, okay, sorry. The, but the remainder of this slide are two other types of standards, again, limited use standards. Like I said earlier, these are the ones that can be done by, by right, they don't have to go, the person wanting to do it doesn't have to go to a public hearing, but that use, like for example, a, a bed and breakfast, or maybe a gas station in a more, smaller-scale commercial area, those kind of things have specific standards tied to those uses in those districts that have to be lived up to by the, by the applicant. And then there's special uses, which are, which you kind of have a variety of already, where that has to go, those are the more impactful uses, like a hospital or, you know, one, something that's more in a campus, often a more campus-like environment, or some kind of utility that can be intense, like a landfill or something of that nature, that has to go to the planning and zoning commission for a recommendation and ultimately to city council for their approval. So those are built into the use table in this draft as well. We have space in here for accessory uses, carports and portcachets, and I might not be saying that quite right, but those are visuals on, on the screen there, but we have provisions for where they can go, what, how wide they can be, their setbacks, they can encroach into a sidewalk or a utility easement, that kind of thing, so that it's very clear about what can be done with, with them. Other items on, on the screen are also handled in our accessory uses and structures provisions in the code. These are the, the smaller things that kind of go along with the big things, so outdoor storage or outdoor display, that type of stuff, drive-ins or drive-throughs at a restaurant or a bank. Often, something related to that would be that they have to have a certain distance from any residential property, or the speakers can't point toward, you know, be directed toward a house, things to protect the, the people who live next door. Accessory dwelling units, everyone's favorite, right? These were, at one point, allowed in Lubbock, and then at one point disallowed and are currently not allowed. And like many things, things that were old become new again, and in some places, accessory dwelling units offer independent living for maybe an older adult who, who's grown kids live in the main house, or they can be kind of an alternative or a less dense form of multifamily housing, they can be affordable housing for students or recent graduates of, from college, they can potentially have income generation for the people who own the property and who might live in the, the main area. We do, right now, have standards for accessory dwelling units as limited uses in the more suburban districts, and they are down as permitted uses, so the little bit easier version in the more urban districts. Again, as a draft, this is probably something that will take a lot of discussion with staff, between us and staff and between you all and us, and how, what is right for Lubbock. Maybe it's not right at all, maybe a very controlled version is right, or maybe you want to go even looser than that. That's what we need to try to find out from you all. Right now, there are standards about, basically, to sum it up, to make these ADUs as unobtrusive as possible. One extra parking space is required in the draft for them. They are looked at as, in both, in terms of both, well, the, the screen shows, I don't know if there's, yeah, there's a pointer. This is an attached accessory dwelling unit, so you really don't even notice it's there, but it is a separate, completely separate dwelling unit that's part of this house here. There are detached, completely detached freestanding accessory dwelling units. Then the third version is the one on the second story, like this might be a garage and then above it a garage apartment, as it's often called. These do add, you know, for any single-family property that has it, has one, you're adding one extra dwelling unit, so it increases the density, it can increase, you know, traffic coming in and out of the house. If it's built too close to the neighboring property, it can have problems in that way too. So basically, I don't know if you want to say anything about those now or wait till we're done, but I'd be happy to keep going or take a pause, either way.
Mr. Mayor, you mentioned earlier about more flexibility in, in adding on to your, your house. For example, that would be part of this ADU, I would presume that you could add or allow to add on to, but that's, I want to be sure that's not in the historical district, is that correct?
Well, so if, if ADUs ended up being allowed in the unified development code, then there would probably in that established neighborhoods, and it would be an allowance to be able to do that, to, to add those in, or we, we could cut, I mean, we could do, take a different approach and not allow them in established neighborhoods since people, you know, theoretically bought into a neighborhood not expecting a new little unit to be in their, you know, and, next door to them. It, it can go however we would want it to, however you would, and the, you know, the general public would want it to. So, and in the historic districts, we haven't, that's not part of this module, so we would just have to take under consideration what your advice is and the council and commission's advice on how to handle those in the historic district, if they're, if they're allowed at all.
Okay, all right. We're just getting a little ahead, I guess. Okay, thanks.
Anything else before I move on for this? Just a couple of other home occupations are addressed in the accessory uses, that's where someone does an unobtrusive business from inside their house. Often nowadays, it's, you know, internet-based and they, you go through the mail and no one ever comes or goes, and so, you know, often what do we care if they're making a living out of their house? You know, we would not want there to be external results of that business showing up outside like storage or extra noise or things like that, but under, under controls, we would, you know, we have home occupations in there as an allowed. you know, we have home occupations in there as an allowed accessory use in a residence.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
On something like that, what would you suggest in addressing it? Just have, really drilling down and being specific as to what is and is not allowed?
As far as very specific uses, what we do is to generally set parameters, like I said, no outdoor storage, no, it's no noise that would normally not go along with a normal, you know, house, no come-and-go retail, several parameters like that, but often, and I don't remember if we did it in this one, but it could be something to think about, we call out certain specific ones that you just can't do, like auto repair or sometimes beauty shop is in there, ones like that. I mean, that would have come-and-go retail, so that would, kind of the catch-all standards would prevent that, but we, we have before laid out just, you know, certain specific ones that no matter what, you just can't do them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
On this, on the ADU, when I'm looking at your first picture, attached ADU, as being a home builder, to me, that looks like somebody just added on a bedroom. So what, but in your, in this classification, you're identifying that as a separate dwelling structure? Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, that would be in this conceptual example, that, and it's just yellow to highlight, you know, the, the-
That's right.
-the part of it, would have sleeping, small dining and bathroom, bathroom, everything that would make up a, you know, the necessity.
But separated from the main dwelling structure?
Yes, right.
So it would not be in addition to the house. It is, but it's not-
It's not a, just a room that's added on. It's a fully functioning-
Independent, okay, which I understand, the other two examples.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Similar to accessory uses, we have temporary uses as well. Most of those are permitted by right, subject to, excuse me, subject to limitations. We do have a few of the more intense ones, like a circus that are, that require a special use permit in this draft, so they would have to go to a hearing to have that on a, take place on a property. And we also have in there the number of days per event and then the number of events per year. So as an example, a good one might be, one that has kind of a mix here, just the outdoor circus or carnival. That would be fourteen, on a single property, fourteen, fourteen days per event and then one event per year. That's what the fourteen slash one means, and that's explained, it's not shown on the slide, but that's explained in the text above the table, what that number slash another number is. It's the, the number of days per event and the number of events on that property per year for each of those temporary uses. That's often another, just like the, the unclassified uses I mentioned earlier, that's often hard for staff to administer because there's just a black hole often in the regulations about what, how to handle those type of things. So at least the, the structure's there for us to handle them and to, to make it even more specific to handle, you know, everything that would, that could come up in Lubbock.
Mr. Chalis.
Thank you, Mayor. On column number one, specific standard, G1, G2, G3.
Yep.
What are, what are you making reference to there?
So there are paragraphs that follow the table that are tied to each of those uses that spell out different standards that would generally be related to something like, you know, providing bathroom facilities, if it's like, something like the carnival or circus type event. If it's something like another, the batch plant, concrete or asphalt batch plant would have, probably would have regulations about dust or other material or watering down the, the area where the, where the facility is, those kind of things, specific standards tied to each of those.
So, I guess the question, it'll be quite prescriptive?
Prescriptive in that trying to be-
Regulations?
-clear and articulate about standards that apply to each of those types, each of those specific temporary uses.
Would that be city-regulated or would that be state-regulated?
There could be bleed over or spill over into state or city. When we put this draft together, we have looked through the city code, but we can try to make sure that there's not duplication or even worse, you know, contradiction for anything that would be in the city code related to some of these types of uses.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have one, I think, final division here, which relates to measurements and allowances. It really just explains how things are measured, how height is measured, like depending on the building, we have a peaked roof, a gambrel roof, flat roof, a mansard roof. There could be different ways of measuring how high each of those types of roofs or buildings are, so there's guidance for that. Guidance just for what we mean by side, side lots and front, or side yards and front yards. Different things here in the measurements and exceptions, or measurements and allowances that, that spell out how things are measured, and they provide some extra allowance, kind of like the established neighborhood thing I mentioned earlier. This allows certain things like chimneys or bay windows to encroach into a setback where normally they wouldn't be allowed to encroach because that type of thing usually generally just kind of adds interest to the building, so we don't want to penalize somebody or prevent them from, from doing that on their, on their building, you know, to a modest There are some next steps to kind of mention here before we wrap up and open up for more questions. We will take what we hear, David and I, this trip, and revise Module 1 and provide it to staff in March of this year and next month, and start working on a preliminary draft of Module 2 this, next month as well, so that by April, we have available to staff for their review and eventually for, you know, you all's review as well, a draft of Module 2. Module 2 is going to include the mixed-use districts, I believe solely, right, David? Only the mixed use, so only the downtown-oriented districts are what's going to, you're, what you're going to be looking at in Module 2. And then in April, David and our subconsultants, Dover Cole, will come to do what we're, kind of what we're doing right now in presenting that module to you all. And with that, we are available for any questions you might have.
Okay, let's open the floor to questions. I'll start with the mayor pro temp. I'll get Jordan, I'll get you right after that.
We can both take questions.
Thank you, Mayor. On subdivision and housing types, y'all gave a, I apologize, I don't know what page it is, gentlemen, but y'all gave a example of forty-acre development.
Of a forty?
Remember that? Okay. My question is-
Oh, the forty acre.
And I looked to the Planning and Zoning Commission also for this, is that you have open space ratio of twenty percent. Is that, is that just a normal, is that standard, or is it varied all over as far as in other cities?
Yeah. That is fairly standard for a suburban setting. You would see, I mean, you wouldn't see more than thirty in my experience, and then probably less than ten or fifteen would, would not be as common either, especially for suburban, so I think twenty is fairly middle of the road.
Okay. Is that, is twenty about right?
Well, that was kind of part of, one of the questions I had.
Okay. I wondered about that.
Go ahead, Mr. Wheatley.
Just a couple of quick questions. Back on your, your vesting slide, I think that was part of one of Mr. Joy's questions. How, how do you propose or how have you in the past defined approval? Is that just based on pre-plat?
Yeah. Approval's received.
Projects that have not been commenced, does that mean, what, I just think we need to define-
Right, right, how exactly? Well, the vested rights provisions, for the most part, pretty spelled out by state law, so a lot of that does reference state law. But we do get real specific into the draft as to, you know, when that would apply and when that does not apply. I'd have to look into the exact language to have a, to get an exact copy. Yeah. What page were you on specifically?
It's, it's that one right there.
Oh, oh, just the, the points, yeah. Let me get to the actual language of it, that can help you with the, the specifics of that question.
Those are the first three pages.
Yeah, okay. Let me get to that exact section, because off the top of my head, I can't remember exactly how we defined it. I'll give you a clearer answer by referencing the code, the actual code. Five and six, okay. Yeah. Yeah, okay, so some of that does talk about, and it is state law as I understand it. We've, we flesh it out a little bit more here, but, you know, to, to petition and to state that, you know, you are in the process for that. I will say that this is a section that we do need to have a little more discussion, I think, with the city attorney because it is very based on, on state law. But our goal in this process is to make it very clear when something is vested and when something is not, and, and there is a procedure that will, you know, take place to en, ensure that for those people who are in the, the process, that it, you know, you get deemed with that as of the adoption date, so it's not like a question of do I have it or do I not have it. But I do think that's a section that actually, as I read the code, we need to do a little more to flesh that out.
Okay. Second question, I think back on Mr. Griffith's question, on that twenty percent requirement on your example for SR, that's suburban residential, is that a, is that a proposed requirement or is that just a suggestion?
Good, very good question. Sorry I didn't make it clear enough. In any of the residential districts, clustering or planned will, will only be options. There will still remain the conventional style of no, basically, no open space dedication. You know, all the, the open area is part of the private property in the conventional, just like you do now, so it's just one more option, the cluster or the planned and the conventional.
So if you look at this slide, and it's not very well zoomed in, I admit, on, on here, but it really does show what he's referring to, is that these are options. These are not, you know, when you look at that suburban residential at the top of, of the first, of the first half of this on the left side, it's not that the conventional is a, is a district, or it's not that the cluster is a district, those are options within that. That's a question we get a lot, is do I have to rezone from the conventional to the cluster? And, and the answer to that is no. It, it's a development option, which basically says if you go with the conventional route, then these are the regulations, but if you go with the clustering route, then you have the, the bonus provisions and the density provisions. Of course, by doing that, you, you reduce the amount of, of private open space, but you increase the amount of common open space. So it, it is a, at the developer's option as to which option they, they choose. So as you, this is an important, I think, an important table from a developer's standpoint to take a look at, to know that, okay, if I'm in the semi-urban residential, okay, I've got, I've actually got three different options here. I've got the conventional, the cluster, and the, and the planned option, so you know which districts you can do, do what items in.
Okay. Last question, I'll leave you alone, but I think, I think it would be helpful for, for me if I could get, maybe next time, if you came back and said, okay, here's an example of a neighborhood in Lubbock, say, I don't, just, I don't want to name one.
Yeah, sure.
Say ABC subdivision.
Uh-huh.
And you labeled it out, what it would be in your, your new-
Yeah.
-map and how you would get to that, because it's popular now and say like a, an eighty-acre block to have duplex over here, townhome on the bottom, single-family kind of in the middle. Do we just have new names for those or is, or is, or would that be like a, do we still have to go get each individual one of those zoned, or would that be a planned development district?
No, it would, it would still, so those, the way that you control those is by the, the actual plat that you send in, so when you submitted a plat, you'd be putting it, you know, this is the planned option or this is the cluster option. Now, what I, as far as to your answer as to which, you know, what exactly would the suburban residential be today? Our plan is that the, the next time we are here, you know, we, when I talked to city staff, they, they told me we had twenty easels, so we got, we have nineteen different boards so, for this one, but we plan on the next one, what we can do is, is show what it is today and what it's, we want to be proposed. But one way that you can take a look at this prior to even doing that is if you look at the right side of the column here, you can see where it says former zoning district, and so you can take a look and know, okay, well, if the zoning district today is R1 and R1A, then that means that that would be the semi-urban residential. So it's not, it's, we don't have the, the graphic here for you today, which we will do, but that's a way you could kind of check it on your own before we have the graphic.
Okay, I'm sorry, it was just kind of small.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, sure.
I wanted to add to that, your question was, to me, just perfect about the, the just prototypical eighty or forty acres, and you have an area of duplex, an area of townhouse, and an area of single-family. You asked if you would have to carve out different zoning districts for those three things or do a planned development for the whole thing that would go through sometimes a long process. We would, we would say no to both and that the, if we did our job right, the, I guess the semi-urban district would handle that just by right, so that you would, within the parameters that are in the written word of the code, you would be able to have those three housing types in one zoning district that's not a planned development. So you get rid of the time and extra cost of a planned development and the time and, you know, stuff that would go along with carving out little zoning districts on that whole property.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson.
One thing that, that I would ask too, when I'm looking at subdivision and housing types, we're talking conventional, cluster, et cetera, and it says large lots or moderately-sized lots, that's going to, to some of us, that's going to give us a preconceived answer, but if you could, I don't know what a large lot is to you guys.
Right.
So if you can maybe look at lot dimensions or square footage, some guys are going to say seven thousand square foot lot is large.
Well, actually in the, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, I wanted to finish. Yeah, so actually in the code itself, we've, we've got it spelled out in this draft, and of course, that is, this, this draft, it may not be where we end up, but we do have provisions within the actual draft that does say for some of the, some of the dimensional standards, what they are, so we'd be happy to, to talk more about that. We do get into the details more in the actual text.
A lot of the difference, if I'm reading this correctly, between conventional and cluster, cluster has the inclusion of HOA property. In other words, open space.
Yep.
That's basically the difference. Am I seeing that correctly?
That is one of the primary differences and probably the primary difference, yes.
So regardless of lot size, you could do eighty-foot-wide lots in conventional or cluster. The biggest difference is HOA, open space.
Right.
Controlled by an HOA.
Yeah, the, the lot size regulations, though, for the cluster is different, so you, you would have, for the conventional, you have a much larger square footage minimum for, for your lot.
Okay.
Then, then the cluster, where you'd have a smaller square footage minimum for-
Right, so if you do one-acre lots, but yet you have an HOA facility, that falls under what?
Well, in, in that, we, we do have the rural estate, and there is a conventional and a cluster option there, so we do have that available, yes.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a little more information about overlay.
Okay. Yeah, we're gonna be working on doing the overlay portion. That'll actually be in the second, in the second module. But, we, in general, I know our philosophy is to try to remove the overlay districts as much as we possibly can. However, with some of the historic, you know, which is what I think you're probably getting at, we're not quite sure how that's gonna flesh out, but we'll have a better understanding of that when we, when we present the second, second module, so.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Wilson.
How does this go hand-in-hand with a planned development district?
Well, the idea behind the way we do this is that the planned or the cluster option kind of in effect is a planned development district. It's just that you don't have to go through the negotiated process to get to that final, final step, you know.
So, in this scenario, like cluster, there's actually no reason to do a PDD?
Yeah, that's exactly right. We've, we've kind of flipped the process. Instead of having you having to go to the city and say, hey, I want to do a PUD, let's have this negotiated process. It could take three or four months. We've kind of written the standards that would be applicable for that. And of course, it's in draft and we're gonna flesh out, you know, more of that. But, it's, it's a way of reducing the administrative burden that it takes and it provides more clarity for the city too as well because they've come up with a consistent set of, you know, this is what we believe, you, you know, this, these are our standards. This is what you would have to meet to do this planned development.
Okay. Because a lot of the, a lot of the PDDs actually are also mixed use.
That's true. Yeah, and then some of the, so like the urban residential area and then the traditional neighborhood, which is something that we're gonna get into in a future, well, that'll be Module Two when we come back. We haven't really gotten into the, you know, the weeds with that one yet. But, those are the PDs that you're referring to, I could see falling under the urban residential or that traditional neighborhood or category. So, some of that's gonna be incorporated in that.
And I think PDD is minimum like 40 acres or some, it's, there's a minimum acreage.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Applies to that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so in that large lot, that would be incorporated in the cluster version of the rural estate, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Wheatley.
One more question.
Yeah.
So, in a lot of our developments, they're kind of, they're very fluid based on what the demand is this month.
Yeah, sure.
Or even next month. So, let's say we're rocking along here and we've got a block of duplexes, but suddenly I've got a builder six months later that wants a block of townhomes.
Yeah.
Are we gonna have to come back? And let's say we already had that whole thing zoned as duplexes from here up, but this guy's wanting this to be townhomes on the next lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we gonna have to come back or is this a fluid deal where we can just?
Yeah, it would be, I mean, as long as you're within the semi-urban residential. I mean, there could be a situation where your change is so drastic that you would have to go from the semi-urban residential to the semi-urban residential attached, but the jump is gonna be so, is gonna be pretty high. The scenario you just said with the duplexes and townhomes, no, that's, that's, that wouldn't happen for you. But, I mean, if it were something that took you into the next category, I mean, it is possible you could, there could still be rezonings, but it's gonna reduce the amount of that significantly for you.
So, do y'all consider duplex and townhomes to be in the same?
Yes, that would be as part, that would be incorporated in the semi-urban residential attached. And I think, I'd have to look back, sure, but also the semi-urban residential, it would be incorporated in that too, so.
Excuse me for buttoning in. If it's townhomes, duplexes, essentially that's attached.
Yeah.
It's a different classification.
Yeah, you're correct. It would be, the single-family version would be only in the semi-urban residential, you're correct. And if it's, but I think the scenario he put was duplexes and townhomes in the same is what I heard. That would not require a rezoning.
Because it's in the same class.
Because it's in the same class. That would be under the semi-urban residential attached. But, if it were a single-family home versus a townhome, then those would be in different categories.
At the same time, Jordan, there was a conversation earlier about garden homes. Garden homes are not attached. They are single dwellings.
Yeah.
They're not attached like a duplex or a townhome. So, the garden homes, even though some people call zero-lot line, courtyard homes, whatever, those would actually fall under SUA. No, not SUA, SU.
Right.
Am I correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Atkinson, do you have any comments?
No, sir. We'd just encourage members of the council, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, if you have specific comments or questions, if you'll get that to staff, we will work to have those back answered in a public setting for you.
Yeah, so just a process check. We talked about tomorrow, we've got, beginning at 5:00 here, we have an open house, I believe, in the committee room out to my left. That's where we'll have the pictures, the boards with the pictures on them. If you're like me, that'll be, that's a lot more valuable to you. I don't necessarily speak all the same languages, some of the pros in this. So, I encourage you to come and to look and to ask questions. Also tomorrow night, there'll be another opportunity at 7:30 at the Mahon Library. Remember that this is the first of four modules, that we don't anticipate this work to be finished for very close to 12 months, I think, first quarter of, I think we're shooting for the first quarter of '21, I believe, is the target on this.
Our target, Mayor, is March 2021.
There you go, March 2021. So, 13 months out, we've got, there's a lot of ground to cover. These are, these are all in draft form, but we will continue to take these steps and expect that another, I think we're looking for sometime in April, early May, something like that for another, for the next module. And then we'll continue to move down, move down the road, okay? So, if there's no further business, the, Mr. Sawyer, I'll let you adjourn first down there, how about that?
Adjourn.
Okay. adjourn. Planning and Zoning Commission, this is, it's 7:16. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas. Lubbock City Council's adjourned.